Vice Chair, you may just want to announce that there was a technical issue and that when we started the meeting, we are on the first agenda.
Are they live now?
Yeah, we are live now.
Okay.
Yeah, for mine.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just want to share that we had a technical glitch with YouTube. We've opened the meeting, we've taken no action, we are currently on the first agenda item. Item one, resolution for reclassification of two property control analyst positions within the assessor's office.
Yep, thank you Commissioners, and for those that, since we weren't on YouTube, for the first part, just mentioned that this item we brought forward yesterday for review, it is on the agenda for action today. I want to thank the assessor for their work at identifying operational needs and working within their budget, and then also for Summer, working with their team on costing this out, and then Maria doing the work to bring this forward. So with that, if there are, we're here to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have.
Are there any questions from the Commission? Any questions online? Here we go, and I see this on the agenda for action, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, I motion to approve the agenda, or, I'm sorry, I'm not in it, so I don't have the agenda in front of me. Sorry, I'm the only one here. I have a motion to approve the resolution for reclassification of two property control analyst positions for the assessor's office.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? There any no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next item, opioid settlement funds. We have Public Health Social Services, I know Commissioner Mensah is not with us, but he has stated he'd be able to watch this on YouTube later, so we will be catching all this.
Staff are getting set up, I just want to thank you so much for your patience. We ran out of time at the last meeting, and we know this is an important conversation. We didn't want to shortchange it with only giving you less than 15 minutes, because we know you put a lot of our courses together. So with that, we'll turn over.
Great, thank you. Jen Fryhight, Director of Public Health and Social Services, Katie Strozek, I'm sorry, I totally usurped you.
That's okay. Katie Strozek, I'm the Opioid and Overdose Response Program Manager.
And this is a continuation from two weeks ago. Today's discussion will be more around the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding, which will talk about appropriate uses of the funding, the OAC, and the core strategies. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you. So with the last board work session, we kind of went into the settlement 101, just to give a background and layout of the actual settlement structure, and then for today, we're going more into a deeper dive of the One Washington MOU, allowable uses, the role that the Opioid Abatement Council serves. It's meant to be informational only with no action needed today. So for today, we're going over the One Washington MOU, Opioid Abatement Council, their role for Thurston County, ours is a little bit more specific, because we are a subgroup of the region, and then the approved uses, as well as the core strategies, because they give us a list of approved uses that we can legally spend on, as well as a list of core strategies that we're supposed to prioritize a bulk of the money towards.
Can you say that one more time, please?
Yes, which part?
The two different.
Yeah, definitely. So in the One Washington MOU, there's a large list of approved strategies, which is essentially the long list of programming and types of programming that we're legally allowed to spend our money on, because like we went over at the last work session, we have to stay within these parameters of opioid remediation uses. However, they've made a more specific list, too, that's pulled from that list of legally approved uses for core strategies, which are basically target priority areas that we're supposed to spend a bulk of our settlement money within.
Thank you. And those are available?
Yeah, it was included in your packet, I believe. The approved uses are in the back of the One Washington MOU, they begin on page... It's a hefty MOU. It's going to be Exhibit A in the MOU, about halfway through the MOU large packet.
I don't know if we have the MOU met large packet with us, mine's up at my desk, so...
So we have the presentation, and then the MOU is a separate...
Yeah, there's a big list.
So we'll go through this, then we can engage on the other time. Thank you.
Can I ask Katie just a quick question on the uses? Is mat using, or is administering medication in the jail, what are those uses, do you know? Okay.
So with the One Washington MOU, participation and signing the One Washington MOU was required as a condition of direct payment of opioid funds. So every jurisdiction in the state of Washington who receives opioid funding was required to sign on to the One Washington MOU in order to receive those funds. It's not something that's specific to Thurston County, it's going to be all jurisdictions have to follow the same outline. It really requires the creation of these opioid abatement councils, it shows what role they serve and their legal requirements that have to be met, because there are certain boxes that we have to check in order to spend our opioid abatement funding, in order to comply with reporting and things like that. So we were originally placed in a seven county allocation region, they broke up these opioid abatement councils in the MOU by accountable community of health regions, so our Cascade-Pacific Action Alliance region. So we were in a seven county allocation region with Thurston, Lewis, Mason, Cowlitts, Grace Harbor, Pacific, and Wakayakam Counties. The counties during a discussion, I believe it was two years ago, realized that that's a huge region to try to convene these opioid abatement councils with, and instead of doing one large seven county allocation region for our OAC, they did sub regions, and so for ours, ours is just Thurston County, so it's going to be the county, and then the cities of Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia, who have to come together to meet the requirements in the One Washington MOU. And then that was all done through an ILA in 2023 as well, so all of our jurisdictions in the seven county region signed on to an ILA creating these sub OACs.
Can I ask a quick question on that, too?
Yes.
So then, who got, who else got grouped together? So Lewis, Mason?
So Lewis County is going to be Lewis, Centralia, and Chehalis for their cities, and then I'm not sure of the specific breakouts. I can pull the ILAs that were signed and...
No, I just was wondering, can you off the head?
This is much more manageable.
Yeah, so they broke it down into the smaller subgroups and, okay.
Yeah, it got a lot more complicated, too, when you looked at the seven county allocation region, because places like Wakayakam County are getting such little money, and they really don't have infrastructure stood up, and so other jurisdictions, it was easier for everyone to kind of group together based on the regions that they already work in and more localized.
Yeah, and I guess that's my question about Mason. Some of, one of the reasons I'm asking this question is because Thurston-Mason BHO covers a lot of the funding for both Thurston County and Mason County, and Mason County's not included in this, and so that kind of flags something for me, but Mason is going to be controlling their own.
Yeah, so with opioid abatement councils, there's technically no control over spending or funding decisions within those. How Thurston County operates may be a little bit different than that, with our OAC serving multiple roles, but with the opioid abatement councils, as laid out in the One Washington MOU, their legal requirements have nothing to do with allocation of money, it's really the oversight of the spending that they do, not the allocation of funding. So like talking about Mason County, I'm not sure how they're allocating their funding, or if their opioid abatement council was stood up yet. A lot of the counties in our region hadn't stood up their OAC at the beginning of this year yet, but the OACs have no decision per the One Washington MOU requirements for making funding decisions.
Okay.
So there are some conditions of direct payment that are laid out in the One Washington MOU that basically is saying that every jurisdiction that signs on as a condition of direct payment, so receiving direct allocation of opioid settlement funding, they have to do certain things in order to legally spend and comply with utilization of opioid settlement funds. So one of those is going to be to develop a methodology for obtaining proposals for the use of opioid funds, there can't just be a decision made on how those opioid funds are being spent by a top-down or one individual, there has to be an opportunity for community-based input on priorities. So while we do have the One Washington MOU that outlines the approved uses and the core strategies, we also have to have a mechanism for developing those community-based localized priorities as well. One thing that we're kind of ahead of the curve on in Thurston County with that is we do have our opioid response plan, which is developed with community-based feedback, stakeholder, lived experience, cross-sector, so we actually already have a response plan that compiles that community-based input for priority areas. We also during our revision of the opioid response plan in fall of last year, when we did a survey that was community-facing, we gathered information on priority areas based on the core strategies within the One Washington MOU, so we allowed community members to kind of rank their top priorities within the core strategies. So we do have community-based feedback with that, with I believe over 100 or 125 responses as well, and that was open to the general community, not just folks who work in substance use or behavioral health. There also has to be a mechanism for receiving, reviewing, and approving or denying proposals for use of opioid funds. This is kind of just a safeguard to make sure that there is that entire process from start to finish about kind of a request for proposals, and then the big one is, is that we have to report to the opioid abatement council and make publicly available all decisions on opioid fund allocation, applications, distributions, and expenditures. So essentially, we have to report to the opioid abatement council, which is that four jurisdiction body, how opioid funds were used, the process that we use to allocate them, how they were decided on, and then the actual expenditures, so what we're paying out. So in the One Washington MOU, it requires the formation of our opioid abatement council or OAC. Those OACs are required to be formed and established prior to any distribution or spending of opioid settlement funds. So that's the big reason why we haven't been able to touch our opioid settlement funds in Thurston County yet, because we were just able to form our OAC last month, and so we couldn't spend any of our money, and the same thing with cities of Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia as well. This body had to be created before anyone is allowed to touch their funds at all. The opioid abatement councils, per the MOU, oversee allocation, distribution, expenditures, and dispute resolution. They don't oversee actual funding allocation or funding awards, but they oversee fund allocation in making sure that it aligns with the approved uses. So it's not deciding on the allocation, but it's making sure that the allocations follow legal requirements for being within opioid remediation. All participating local governments in the allocation region must appoint a representative, and so we already have our representatives chosen from our three jurisdictions, as well as the county.
And they are?
Count Erk, Commissioner Grant, Councilmember Cooper, Mayor Protem, Dahlhoff, and Councilmember Brinkstein.
Thank you. Good job.
Off the top of my head.
Well done.
So kind of some additional opioid abatement council responsibilities that are broken down and kind of a more granular level, is they need to oversee distribution of opioid funds to programs and services in accordance with the approved uses. So again, that's not deciding what gets funded, but that's saying that, okay, this jurisdiction funded programs A, B, and C, and yes, those match the legally approved uses that we're allowed to use it on. So again, the example of spending on roads, if one of the jurisdictions was to spend it on road repairs, and that got reported to the opioid abatement council, it would be the OAC's responsibility to say, hey, no, no, you cannot actually do that, it doesn't comply with the legal requirements and approved uses. The OAC also has to review expenditure reports for compliance, so looking again at what's being funded and how much money is going out to make sure that we're only spending on opioid remediation. They will manage distribution of opioid funds in the case where any jurisdiction has chosen to forego their allocation. There is a whole chunk in the MOU about how different jurisdictions can essentially forfeit their opioid settlement money and have it redistributed across the region. I haven't heard of any jurisdictions in Washington who are doing it, it kind of seems like it was put in place as a safeguard for jurisdictions who are super, super small, who may not have a process or capacity to allocate those funds. I haven't heard of any jurisdictions that have done it, though, so, but it is in there as a chunk. The OAC also has to report on and make publicly available all decisions, again, on that RFP process, and through that, they have to develop and maintain a public-facing dashboard as well about expenditure data, which includes the revenue that we're receiving from opioid settlement funding, as well as our expenditure data, and asked to be updated on an annual basis. One of the things that you may have heard in a previous meeting was that the state has developed a dashboard as well on opioid settlement funding. The state developed an internal-facing dashboard, so it's accessible for anyone who is essentially involved in opioid settlement process or government in general. It's not public-facing. They received a lot of feedback during their development sessions that it doesn't meet the legal requirements of the MOU, so there is that private internal-facing dashboard from the state that is a little clunky to report into, but we would be responsible for maintaining a dashboard that is public-facing. It's super basic, again, it's just revenue and expenditures updated on an annual basis. We at Public Health have already developed a public-facing dashboard that hasn't gone live yet, it has all of our Thurston County revenue reported into it already, and at the last opioid abatement council, we went over with the other jurisdictions that will need to input their data as well for revenue, so that's something that they're kind of already working on behind the scenes as well. So hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll be able to have that public facing with all of the revenue data showing for our four jurisdictions, and then we won't have any expenditure data to report until money starts to move out the door as well. And then the opioid abatement council is also responsible to hear complaints regarding alleged failures to use opioid funds for approved purposes, so again, if one jurisdiction went buck wild with the money and spent it on something weird, it would be the opioid abatement council's role to be able to step in and hear the complaint and evaluate whether the funding actually meets the approved uses as outlined in the MOU.
It's called the Buckwild Clause.
Legally. With the operation of the opioid abatement council as well, whoever takes on running the opioid abatement council, which in our case has been Thurston County, is able to gather 10% of opioid funds in the region, those are going to be reserved, but it's meant for actual costs, so it's actual costs for functioning and operating the OAC, up to 10% of the opioid funds in the region, that's separate from the administrative costs that are allowed for each jurisdiction within their own opioid settlement funding. So each of our four jurisdictions is allowed at least 10%, or up to 10%, but only actual costs for administering their opioid funds, and then there's an additional 10% from the regional amount that's allowed for the operation and administration of the opioid abatement And then with that, we have not touched the money either for any of those administrative So then kind of touching on approved uses and core strategies, again, all of the opioid settlement funds have to be utilized pursuant to the approved uses as defined in the MOU with priorities for the core strategies. We actually have to report on an annual basis as well to the national settlement about whether we've used any opioid settlement money for unapproved uses. The proposal and award process and all of that decision-making has yet to be finalized for our jurisdictions. We again have just formed our opioid abatement council, it's something that's in the beginning stages, they haven't had those conversations yet, because they had to be established before we could even look at moving money out the door. And when we look at the approved uses, so in the actual MOU, it is a lot heftier, it is all of Exhibit A, it's multiple pages, and it goes more in-depth about the approved uses and kind of some descriptions of what types of programming falls under them, but they're really separated into these approved uses as far as expanding access to treatment, connections to care, recovery support services, primary prevention, overdose prevention and harm reduction, first responders. When they list first responders also, it's really meant as like an EMS first responder, not necessarily like law enforcement DEA types of things, leadership planning and coordination training, and then there is some research portions that are allowable as well. And then when we look at those, so these are things that we can legally spend our money on, there is also core strategies, so these are the things that they have pulled out from those list of approved uses that we're supposed to prioritize a bulk of our funding for. These approved uses and core strategies are used across the nation as well, this isn't something that's specific to Thurston County. So when we look at our core strategies, we're meant to target a bulk of our funding towards naloxone, medications for opioid use disorder, and other treatment options, pregnant and postpartum individuals, expanding treatment for neonatal abstinence syndrome, expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery services, so things like peers in the community, treatment for incarcerated populations, prevention programs, both primary prevention as well as overdose prevention, and then expansion of syringe service and harm reduction programming. Questions?
Commissioner McGee.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, as we move forward, how do we plan to engage with the tribes? And, you know, I know Chehalis and Nisqually, for example, they're, they're working on different strategies to help communities, and so I'm wondering, what is going to be the engagement with our local?
Yeah, definitely. So it is a process that hasn't really yet been established, and it's been really clunky at the state level as well, so the settlement that we have access to is actually different than the settlements that the tribes have access to. The tribes for all of the United States filed their own settlement together, separate from the jurisdictions that filed. So they've received their own funding in their own funding allocation process and payment structure, and there's no requirement in either their settlement or our settlements for there to be coordination, pooling of funds, or anything like that, and the state has really been really hands-off about that as well, and it's really up to each tribe and each jurisdiction as far as what they do. The good news is with ours is that our tribes are heavily engaged with our opioid and overdose response program locally, they have different MOUD programs in Thurston County, they've been heavily involved in our Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force for multiple years now, so we're really lucky to already have established collaboration with our tribes in this programming area. We haven't specifically explored settlement-based collaboration yet, and a lot of that was really due to the fact that we were behind on starting our opioid abatement council, so it was hard for us to even have a conversation about that when we had nothing to report on our process yet. So I really look forward to being able to have those conversations with the tribe, I'm not sure what they have done with their settlement money yet, I know that their payments were kind of behind even the payment of the settlement money for the other jurisdictions, but I believe there are opportunities for collaboration there, especially as our OAC has gotten started now.
Commissioners, we can send you a copy of the current MOU that the county signed. Back when was it?
Actually, just putting it up right now, I can, anyway, I just...
Do you remember Katie when it was signed?
Two years ago, I believe it was then in 2023 with the regional one.
And if you recall Commissioners that were on the board at the time, former assistant county manager, Robin Campbell, was working with the other jurisdictions to determine if they wanted to draft a new MOU that codified the pooling of the resources, and that's where there was a bit of a delay, because I think there was a misunderstanding in, the MOU needed to be completed before the council came together, and so when I was updated, the city managers asked, let's just get the council together, and then if a new MOU comes from that, then that's fine, because we did have a current MOU. I believe that current MOU doesn't pool resources at this time, is that correct?
Correct.
So every jurisdiction uses the resources on, on their own jurisdiction's perceived needs. We can send that to you, so everyone has it if you can't get it.
Yeah, please.
I just, I just sent it.
Okay. So no action, Katie, but next steps?
Yeah, so the next steps will be for our opioid abatement council to convene the next meeting. They have received the exact same information that the board briefings have compiled of so far, they just received it all in one chunk at that first OAC meeting, so the next steps for that OAC meeting will be to kind of reconvene around talking about that MOU, to see if there would like to be edits made. Right now, the MOU, it not only doesn't require pooling of funds, but it kind of excludes the pooling of funds, so I know that one thing that was discussed at the first opioid abatement council was all of the jurisdictions were expressing wanting to revisit that MOU and revisit a discussion around pooling funds.
But the, the OAC's role is not necessarily to set the MOU, their, their role is to kind of overs, kind of serve as like a, like a check on the, the funding allocations?
Yeah. If I could, the, Katie, the MOUs would have to be approved by each jurisdiction's body.
Yeah, but the OAC doesn't necessarily have any purview over the MOU.
Well, I think the OAC, well, and I'm going to allow Katie to answer, because...
At least I didn't see that in the PowerPoint.
Why don't you go ahead and answer, Katie?
Yeah, so in Thurston County, we had kind of set up our OAC with the initial MOU with two purposes. The first, to meet our legal requirements within the One Washington MOU for looking at approved uses, developing and maintaining a data dashboard, making sure there's compliance with the core strategies and any dispute, as well as then looking at the OAC having a role in making those funding decisions, which was the original discussion back in 2023 when the MOU was signed. That is one discussion that would still have to be had, that the OAC was going to be looked at, because that conversation has kind of been tabled due to the ILA specifically not allowing pooling of funds, so it's something that with leadership transition, hasn't really been brought forward for an additional conversation.
Okay, I guess my, yeah, my question would be, what's our next steps, and is it the role of the board to set funding priorities? You know, do we look through these approved uses and core strategies and the board gets together and comes up with a strategy for best uses for the county with these funds?
I think there are some decision points, Commissioner. I want to thank staff for bringing this forward, to have this conversation now, because I think that's the opportunity to get direction from the board, but also you have a representative, Commissioner Grant, who will be sitting on the OAC, and then as it comes to the development of a new MOU, currently the one we have, as Katie outlined, is a vehicle, but if there needs to be a new MOU, that discussion will probably happen at the OAC level, and then it'll come before the Commissioners. Now, our desire is to bring this, bring information to you soon and early, so that as a board, you're aware, and trying to avoid the situation where you feel like you're just getting information at the end of the process, but putting you at the front of the process, and that's why I appreciate both Dr. Fryhight and Katie for doing that. So I think there's some, some points of, of discussion about how that plays out and what the board, where the board wants to be in some of that decision-making.
Yeah, and I will just pipe in that when it comes to, I mean, we have this opioid, Katie referenced it earlier, that there's a plan for, an overall plan for that area around the way that opioid, like with the priorities already set by the people of the county, and so when it comes to funding priorities, you know, the thought would be that we consider the, the hard work that Katie's put into this, you know, plan, and that we be thinking about, of course, if there's other things that come up, like the need for jail staff and, and our jail and medication, then, you know, and there's the ability to fund things like that, maybe that would be a place where we could look for funding, but mostly, it seems like it's kind of already laid out.
And that's, that's a great point, Commissioner Grant, that's something that we can come back at another work session to continue to provide information to the board on how the plan was developed, what's in the plan. I appreciate Katie's approach to, this is a pretty important, but also dense conversation, so breaking this up into bite-sized pieces to allow there to be understanding and then in-between ask questions, and if we would, Commissioners would like more information about the plan itself, because there has been a lot of community input, and we're fortunate as a county to have someone who is a leader in our region, in the state, also heard nationally on this topic, so that can be an opportunity where you have, her, we have Dr. Fryhight and Katie come back and provide education on, on the plan, so that there's more of an understanding about how do we navigate this, and what's the best application based on what the community has provided input and how the plan has come together.
The benefit, too, of having our opioid response plan is we're one of the only counties that has an opioid response plan that's formalized that like this with ongoing community input as well. A lot of the other jurisdictions, when they look at those need for community input and prioritization, they're starting at the very beginning. They don't have opioid response task forces, they don't have buy-in, they don't have a response plan on paper, they haven't spent years doing that work, so we really are ahead of the curve with that as well, with having that process already done, because that's been a huge lift for a lot of communities who just have to start now with stakeholder engagement and community prioritization.
To the county manager's point, maybe bringing those pieces together and highlighting those for the board in total would be...
And, and this was also the presentation that was brought in January to the board of...
And, and this was also the presentation that was brought in January to the board at House. So the, the response plan and that latest updates were brought in January. We were happy to talk more and bring it back, but yes.
More to come. Awesome.
All right, are there any further questions for Public Health? Thank you.
Yeah. Nice job.
Next item, reports on external boards and commissioners. Mr. Claus?
I do not have any updates since yesterday.
Mr. Grant?
No updates since yesterday.
Commissioner Mejia?
No updates since yesterday.
Tito. Next item.
I am, I will just mention, I'm going, I don't know if anyone has anything on their mind around workforce, but I am going to the National Workforce Board Conference this weekend, and there's a lot of really great kind of national conversations going on around local and rural economic, you know, the different kinds of economic pathways that we can be using for, for students and for, for the growth of students in our local community. So it's gonna be super cool. I hope to bring back some really good information on, you know, from the jurisdictions or interacting with that.
Yeah. Excellent.
Sounds real applicable for Thurston County based on what we learned at the ALA Summit.
Yeah, I've got a lot of cool rural, rural workforce stuff coming from the Black Mountain too, yeah.
Wonderful. All right, Commissioner items. Letter to Salary Commissioner regarding 2026 elected officials' salaries. Did this came from Commissioner Mejia, or is that-
And I believe Maria, our HR director, joined us for this. And based on the request from the board to agendize this, and we also have a letter in the packet, Maria's here also just for some backup and support, but I think we'll turn this back over to commissioners for discussion and comment.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, so I brought this item up at the last, last week's agenda setting, and I took a shot at the letter that I think we should send to the Salary Commission. So just wanted to bring forward the conversation on where to go next.
I'll chime in to say, I appreciate the letter. I really liked what I saw when I read it, and it aligns with kind of what I've thought about the Salary Commission, but more so, you know, our own personal salaries, because we can't control them once we get those recommendations. So when I learned that when I first was elected, I kind of was thinking along these lines. And so I just really appreciate you putting that into words, Commissioner Mejia, and finding a way to express that we want to prioritize staff and that it's the responsible thing to do, you know, to protect public resources, for us to kind of hold off fundraises for ourselves. And when I saw it, I was pleased to see that it specifically says, we request that we don't have an increase for ourselves versus the other elected officials, who I know also work hard to put together their briefings for the Salary Commission, because we don't really all, always know the intricacies of what they do. So just acknowledging ourselves in this letter, I think, is a good move.
My thoughts, I, I, so, I mean, my understanding is the Salary Commission doesn't even meet till fall typically. So, you know, we, I think we've got time to talk about this. I think it would be important that we're all here to talk about it, so I wouldn't want to take any action without-
Commissioner Mansour.
Yeah, without full commission input and give it some time. I think it's also important that, to remember that, like, this does just say "us," but the way that the, the way that it rules out i- in the last couple of years is we base, we based everyone else's salary increase on what every, what, what was recommended of the county commissioners' increases. So, you know, that was, that was kind of the, so, so the, the increases that the other elected officials got was based on the recommendation that the county commissioners got. There, so, you know, I think it would be important for other elected officials outside of this board to also understand that even though they're not mentioned this, it does create the opportunity for the board to much more easily not change their pay as well. So while they're not mentioned, it would likely affect them. So they should be given opportunity to kind of speak and, and work with their county commissioners who, who are going to be ultimately making the decision. So I think that's important. And then, yeah, I don't know where I stand on it yet. I'd, I'd like to have full board discussion, but I, I do think that, you know, you know, that it's, I don't know how to put the, I mean, we're, we're talking a small amount of money in the county budget that, well, I, it's, I think it's more symbolic than it is and kind of performative than it is, like, actually doing anything to the budget. And it's also important that all of these elected offices are recognized as jobs that need to have competitive wages in their market. So, you know, I, that's the discussion that I would want to suss out with the full board.
Hey, I just, quick clarification, the Salary Commission usually, we're, we're trying to get it to meet in June so that it aligns better with budget decisions, so in terms of your timing-
Still several months off.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you for working that process earlier. Good job, Maria. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, so, uh, well, I, I want to be really clear that I have, I think it's great that I'm completely okay with not having an increase, and, you know, and what this says is, is, is that, and so I want to be really clear with that. However, I do have a little bit of, and maybe it's just some wordsmithing with the second paragraph. It, it kind of, it red flags me a little bit around when we say that, you know, yes, we do know that we're currently facing a budget shortfall, but we don't have that information really clear yet. And, and, and to write in a letter that we are preparing for potential reduction in staffing could be a little alarming, or it could, could cause fear, is kind of what, you know, and so maybe re, rewording this, you know, to be a little more on like the positive aspect of that of like, we're, you know, would be, at least that's how I would feel if it's coming from me, because I have not seen information that specifically says we will end up with reductions in staffing.
Yeah, so just to respond to that, yeah, I, I think the board's been very honest with all of the electeds and departments, that we are facing a huge budget shortfall since last year. We've been very clear on that. And the reason we paused on it last year, we went through one exercise, we paused on it last year, was only because we had a new county manager, we had a new budget chief coming and joining us, who was still learning the ropes of it, and just with all the instability, we decided to kind of eat it, really, and, and, and do it. But we were planning to go through another cut exercise last, at the end of the fall. So it, it's been no secret, I think we've been very, very honest and forthcoming that there, there is a huge budget gap, there, we are facing budget shortfalls, and there, you know, it's the reality of it. I don't think skirting around the issue, I mean, if it's a thing with the letter, I, you know, we can take it out, but I, I think it's just the reality of what we're facing. We're, we're facing, you know, 12 to 14 million dollar gap in, in our budget, and, and, you know, the state is not coming to, to really save us or, or really assist us in, in any way. And, and then so I, I just wanted to be as honest as, as possible when, you know, I put this forward. And in terms of, I guess, responding to Commissioner Fornair's points, I don't mind waiting until Commissioner Mansour is, is back. That, that's fine with me. I, I would like it, the conversation sooner rather than later, just because then it avoids Maria having to start preparing for an upcoming Salary Commission meeting. And I just think, for us, even though it's little and it's symbolic, it really does matter. I remember being an employee and seeing electeds, right, have the huge bumps, and yet, you know, as employees, we were sometimes constrained just to the 2.5. And, and it kind of, like, you know, especially when you're going through budget shortfalls and you're seeing that, like, it, you're kind of like, it, it kind of goes, you know, it affects morale. And so even though it's, you know, it, it's not a huge budgetary impact, I think it's a good thing to do as, as leaders of the organization, saying, you know, we're kind of holding steady. It was done during COVID. We didn't know what the COVID impacts were going to be, so we did a pause on, on all elect, elected official salaries during that time. So it's not something that is out of the ordinary to do, but I'm happy to have more discussion until we have the full board present.
Okay.
Yeah, no, and I just to follow up a little bit on, I'm happy to, just to adjust the sentence just a little bit. I guess for me, it just feels a little uneasy. I mean, I think the purpose of the letter is to say that, you know, that we are gonna forego, we know that there's gonna be hits and that we're willing to take the hits ourselves. I think that's exactly what this is trying to say. However, what I would hate to say is, is to get, for the people who read this, who are not the elected officials, who are the staff, I need for them to, to take this as a, we're gonna lose our job, sort of a thing, or reductions in staffing. So I would hope that as we move forward together as a group, thinking about staffing and reductions in staffing, that we would be doing anything and everything like this to make sure that we don't have anyone lose their job. And so that's kind of where it went, that was kind of my point of just a little wordsmithing in this sentence, and I'm good to go. And if it's okay, I'll just send a, an edited sentence. Yeah, okay.
So I'm hearing Commissioner Mejia saying that she's okay with continuing this discussion. Is there agreement on that?
I agree with that. I don't remember who said it, but sooner rather than later, I think you said it, Commissioner Mejia.
I think I'm good to give it in too.
But yeah, I, I'm okay with continuing this until Commissioner Mansour has a chance to see it, if he hasn't already. But I'd like to have that discussion as soon as we can, so that we can get this sent off.
And if there are any other edits, please do send them. Again, this was just a proposal, just something I wrote, so if there's something else that needs to change.
When you, you mentioned during COVID, there was a, there was a complete pause on elected officials' pay. What did that look like, and how did you guys roll that out?
Same situation. We sent a letter to the Salary Commission and requested that they not consider any, it was a, a decision the board made, and sent a letter and just said, you know, just due to the circumstances, we don't know where COVID, the COVID landscape was gonna take us at the time. And so-
Okay. In, in our future discussion, when we review this letter again, can we review that letter that we sent out last time?
Do you have any track of that?
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, federal earmark requests.
I have one more question about that.
Yes.
Um, the, I can't remember where we left off with the discussion about appointing for those two vacant positions.
We decided to post.
Yeah.
That was the last that I remember.
Yeah, to pu, to go out for recruitment.
Yeah.
You gonna finish yours?
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering, shoot, I don't know if I remember the rest of my sentence, but yeah, that was just the gist of it. I know we were going out for recruitment, but I didn't know if we had a solid timeline.
Any, are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, I recall we said for a few weeks, so post spring break, we would bring the item back.
Okay.
I, we also have the public hearing on April 15. So I think at, at that, at post, following the public hearing, we could bring the applications back to confirm their eligibility.
And that public hearing is on?
April 15.
No, what is it, the topic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to remind everyone?
To amend the Salary Commission membership requirements.
That was the language Maria brought to us about a week ago.
And I would recommend waiting for that public hearing. In addition, some of these members expire at the end of this month. Some may be reappointed, but we could do some reshuffling. So I think timing it with the public hearing and then reconsidering whatever applicants and, and trying to find more. I think we're gonna have a, a, a good pool unlike prior years.
Awesome. So we can be ready for that conversation, commissioners, the week of April 21st. Bring it back either on the Tuesday or the Wednesday. We'll work with the clerk to do that. And circulate after the 15th, public hearing, strictly by the end of that week, so on the 18th, any applications we perceived up to date.
Good, because we'll want them in place by June, right? For your effort, right?
Yeah. And then that'll give us time to get it on that.
Okay.
Okay. So federal earmarks.
Yeah, so commissioners, we had submitted several federal earmarks last year, and I believe that this is an area that the county is growing in capacity. Right now, the process for the federal appropriations is a bit of a unknown moving target, but we have been notified by some of the offices that they are open to starting to receive. So this is our opportunity to come and engage with commissioners on seeking direction on that. Once we bring on a federal lobbyist, we'll roll this into a process so that it's not a one-off, but it's part of our priorities and platform on the federal level, and then we'll also build in what our federal priority should be. I know that there was a few commissioners that went to NACO conference and had meaningful conversations with our delegation, and so this really is an open conversation. Last thing I'll put out there is we are, have recently learned that the earmarks we put in last year, all of them have not, they've, they've been bumped out. So some of them had a lot of promise, and we're making their way through by the end of the calendar year in 2024, but the news now is that they're all not being funded. So some of those are, are really valuable, and we can give you a quick update on what that, those were, if the commissioners need that. But it's an opportunity for us to have this conversation now, so that if the board wants us to get working on things, we can do that over the next few weeks.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. Thank you, county manager. I was, and, and thank you for, for providing that. Yeah, so all federal earmarks from last year are not moving through, and that's not just ours, it's just all of them. And so I was just going to go through kind of the, based on our meetings, the, and Commissioner Fornair, you can add to, to this, just kind of where the priorities are for each congressional delegate. And then we can have discussions. I, I do have like some proposals that I would like the board to consider, especially based on, on the fact that we just got, information that we just got. So Representative Strickland, she said housing was her top priority, and it's not just affordable. She wants every kind of housing possible. And Representative Guzen Camp Perez, she's serving on appropriations this year. And so she said she's, you know, she would like to see something interjurisdictional within her districts. Senator Randall, while not in our district, she did express some strong interest in the ORV park, and that was an item on our list, and it's something that we're going to be discussing with Grace Harbor County. Senator Cantwell, transportation remains a key focus for her. And then Senator Murray, she wants ready-to-go projects, and one of her recommendations, just based on the fact that this is not, the earmarks are not moving forward, was resubmitting the Fairgrounds request with a higher fund ask and a refined focus on emergency management and disaster mitigation. And also, another particular interest is childcare facilities. And so that's kind of the overlay of, of, of what their priorities are. Anything you'd like to add?
No, not, not really. Just want to move this discussion forward and come up with some strategy.
So just kind of based on those priorities, just thinking on things that we have going on- So just kind of based on those priorities, just thinking on things that we have going on currently. Um, with Representative Strickland, I thought um the Martinway Corridor, the utility and road infrastructure could be a strong request. Um, and I know that we had given direction uh to the County Manager to start work on that, but uh not sure if that's something that is going to be able to be accomplished in time for when this opens, because I know getting the letters of support, usually that's what takes up the most time. Um, if not, I, you know, I guess I would recommend doing the Fairgrounds request. She was, she was our champion with the Fairgrounds request. Um, and um, so that would be. With Representative Guzen Camp Perez, um, I uh, I think another thing that's been kind of just pending for a long time on, in her district, has been the water rights from Trans Alta. Um, it's, it's been a, a conversation that, you know, we've had with staff. We need the water rights. They are available and um it is something that I feel is ready to go, and it's something that we can possibly partner with um the tribe or um Centralia or other jurisdictions. So it's, it's a, a joint request. Um, this, with Senator, or with uh Representative Randall, um, the um, ORV Park, I, I'm not sure this would be a Grace Harbor submittal, because they're the, you know, that's their rep, but not, you know, I guess, once they're ready, we can submit a letter of support and, or support them in, in whatever way. Uh, Senator Cantwell, um, I was thinking just having uh maybe that on the Senate side, the Martinway Corridor, having it both on the House side and then having something pushed for the Senate side. Um, and then with uh Senator Murray, um, having uh the uh, the Fairgrounds on the House, on the Senate side as well. Uh, but she also uh showed uh, expressed support for the water rights purchase request from Trans Alta, so.
Commissioner Grant?
Okay, um, well, I guess I'm glad we're, um, thank you for bringing this here, because I was really confused on how this all, this whole process works anyway. Um, but uh, because this is my first time, you, you know, we're talking as if I'm supposed to know what earmarks are, but um we're, you know, like the, you know, and how we've done this in the past. And so I've not really had a chance to really talk about that with folks, um, other than meeting with Maria Cantwell's staff and um Patty Murray's staff. Um, they walked through um how earmarks have gone in the past and how things have worked and the general way that, you know, so I've gotten that perspective, and that's the only perspective I have so far. Um, you know, and so, um, and I, and thank you, Commissioner Mejia, for bringing, um, I would love if you could share with me those notes that you have, that, you know, because they're well thought out and really great. And um, so I guess, you know, th- this was a question for me as well. It's like, okay, well, there's, you know, a couple other projects that will be coming down the pipe for us, you know, one being um, you know, the, the, the need for this. You know, of course, you guys know what I'm gonna say, which is the Crisis Care Center, um, which, you know, could be a one-time, there could be an additional one-time, um, you know, I, I think I talked to Patty Murray's um office about it a little bit around projects, and if there was a one-time um request for capital funds, um, to kind of bolster up what they need in order for them to get this project done. That was something that I'm, I'm, I'm interested in. The other thing that came up um just yesterday and in discussions with folks um uh would be that, you know, if we, if there was a need for, you know, we have, we have the jail and we have, we have all of these needs around the jail and we have all of the needs around, um, you know, expanding the ITA courthouse. And we have, um, in, in that realm of things, there are one-time projects that could be, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar ask for um an expansion or remodel of an ITA courtroom or, and I know that they're not, you know, I was able to get from um Patty Murray probably being the one area that they might be behind that. Um, but um, you know, those are the things that are on my mind. Um, so I'm just gonna put that out there.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. Um, I did ask about the jails. Uh, I think I've asked about them twice, two, two years in a row, and no jails is basically what I got told. Um, we submitted a request for cameras last year, and uh unfortunately, it was when the Burbank situation was happening and therefore no congressional delegate wanted to touch, uh, touch it, and so, um, and so that was, you know, kind of the, and, and this year, as, as I asked, uh, they were very specific that no jails. Nothing to deal with jails.
Got it.
It was just like.
We were told the same thing about the word courthouse too. Or courtrooms, courthouse, when we, you know, we asked very specifically with some of our uh delegates, you know, the word jail and the word courthouse were almost like red flags, no go.
Right.
And, but, but like for these, you know, these projects, like it's, it's important that we, you know, we recognize that these ones that are on here are ones that are, you know, I wouldn't call, I don't know about them being legacy projects, but they're projects that have been flushed out over the years. So, you know, like, when, when a new concept comes up, uh, you know, and when these, you know, community fund requests come in, sometimes we don't even know when the timeline opens on it. And so like, we have to play this game where we're calling, or Matt's calling their office, hey, when's it gonna go live? When's it gonna go live? And they don't tell us. And then there's been instances where it's like, you have forty-eight hours to get this in. So we have to have projects that are, that are like ready, ready to move on, uh, and we have to be ready to, we have to be ready to take action and then make sure that we can deliver on them. Because like the conversation happened last week where we get, well, we don't know, you know, we don't know exactly what we're gonna spend it on. We can't, we can't move forward unless we have it like locked down, that we're gonna deliver on what we're gonna take the money on. So, you know, like the, the jail thing, or, well, the courthouse thing, that we're now strategizing on how to come up with a strategy for, you know, courthouse slash admin building. How do we market that? How do we talk about it? You know, we can't say we wanna build a courthouse, we wanna build a regional justice center. Does, you know, like, does the, the marketing of that concept play out to these different pockets where we have to look for funding? And like that one, we're still probably two years out on.
Yeah, and I, and the crisis care, I will just say that, that I will, um, you know, the crisis care may end up being, you know, something we need to look at for next year. I mean, we, well, looking at the timeline. But I do want us to keep that. I mean, that's a legacy project. That was something I, and I actually talked in length with Doc, with, with Murray's office about that. Um, that it could be, you know, it's uh, it's the hot topic. I mean, um, uh, across the whole nation right now is this crisis, around crisis response and the difference in delivering mental health services. And so, um, so I will just say that, that if that was something that, you know, we ended up just having in the hopper and needing to, because we know that's easy, that we, you know, capital funding is bricks and mortar and here's, I mean, they've already got the RFP out and the, the proposals are baked up already, but, so that's something to be con- to, for us to be considering too. And I, I do wanna, I do wanna, since we're in this spot, and I, I, I wanna make sure that I have a moment to, to talk a little bit about um, some experience that I have on the backend of receiving these kinds of projects. Um, you know, for several years, my role as a budget chief um was to be the one to look at these projects that you're bringing, that we're bringing forward, and to actually be the one to say on the other side. So it'd be, I was the staff, let's pretend, for Patty Murray, right? That would be the one to go, pfft, nope, like, these guys are nuts. They don't know what they're doing. Like there was, um, and, and I did this for, for eight years consistently. And um, and so I do want to just kind of mention that as we're, you know, thinking about collaborating and thinking about putting these kinds of projects forward, you know, I um, we don't always have to have things al- already baked. Um, and um, but we do need to have a clear, a clear concise idea and a clear concise path forward and a clear concise timeline and those kinds of things. But you don't have to know the exact numbers, um, and um, and you just have to know, this is the amount that you could give me that would help with the project. And so just kind of putting that there.
Ask a question. Um, so like the, the, with the crisis response uh facility, i- is, I, if it, if it's something that the county owns and builds and purchases, then it would be our request. But if it's something that the BHASO owns and builds and operates, then it would be their request and it would be us writing a letter saying we support their request.
The BHO is the county. The O-HRSS is not the county, but their county employees. I mean, you know. But, but, but look, I'll, I'll tell you that that's not how it works in all the other jurisdictions. So, so for example, I'm gonna give you guys a really good example of this. Northwest Resources here in Thurston County has a building that it owns and it has um people that come to it and get drug treatment. One million dollars was requested from the county to the state to give to that owner to build, because they needed the, the, um, they needed the services in the county. So through the county, a million dollars was allocated back down to Dennis Neal, who owns the business. This is an even weirder thing, owns the business, and they, he was able to buy with another million dollars, buy a piece of property. He now owns it with the, a written-in thing that says he will serve Medicaid clients for the rest of his life, blah, 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 blah. But that is how generally projects are funded. It's always a private company that comes in and the company, it's, we're more or less bribing them to come to our community by saying, we're gonna help you get a million dollars to stay put, provide services, and that's, that's how those kinds of projects are funded.
Looking for clarification?
Yeah.
And looking for uh to?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, that's how it works.
BH, BHASO is a multi-jurisdiction agency, right? They, they don't, they're not just Thurston County. They're several counties.
No, they're two counties.
Two counties.
So they're two counties?
Right.
And they would be the ones that, like, that's the way you've explained it to me. No, but they would be overseeing, operating, they would be the ones responsible.
No.
The funding would go from BHASO to Connections.
Yeah, Connections is a facility that will come in here and open the thing and they will be fu- responsible. They will control it. They will, it'll be like, it's like Providence.
Yeah.
Will come in, Providence comes in and says, we're gonna do this, and we say to Providence, we're gonna give you, if you can get here and do this, we're gonna help you pay down your building by a million dollars, so that you can bring your services, because we need you so bad. That's what happens.
Yeah, you answered my question.
Yeah.
Is, is, yes, it would be a, BHASO would be the responsible agency.
No, they would be the pass-through agency of the funding.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. It's, so, so they would be, they could potentially be the quester. If that's their, if that's their priority, they would be the ones taking lead and going to Senator Murray and saying, hey, we, we want this facility, we want money to build this or, you know, facilitate this. And then we, along with Mason County, would be writing letters of support, saying, yes, that's, so that.
You do realize, though, that, see, this is where I think we get confused about what, who, what Thurston Mason BHO is. It's confusing and I, I understand, and, and that's why, you know, we're sitting on the board and, you know, and doing those things, but it's very confusing and complicated, but they are, they used to be ma- our county.
I understand.
They, they are an arm of our county. They take a large portion of our budget and then they appropriate it out. And so they really are an extension of Thurston County. They are not just their own, they're not making money off of our.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
Right.
I didn't say that at all.
Want to make sure you're learning that, yeah.
No, no, I get that, but they are essentially, you know, like, uh, they're an extra wing.
Right, it's kind of like Wolf Haven. Wolf Haven needs money.
Wolf Haven is a private.
Right, and so as Connections, Connections is a private organization. That's the people that we would be getting the money for, not Thurston Mason BHO, Connections.
But does it go through BHASO to get to Connections?
Go ahead.
I was, uh, check.
Yeah, please. I mean, I, I don't, I'm.
No, I'm just, I'm wondering, uh, Connections could submit their own application for this.
Right, with letters of support from us.
Well, yeah, we could write letters of support, you know, Thurston and Mason. I think that's what Commissioner Fournier was trying to say uh, or saying was, you know, it wouldn't have to be us submitting the application for them. Connections can submit their own application and, and ask us for letters of support and, you know, I'm sure the board would sign on.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Wait, well, see, and I sort of, I didn't know the rules around that, so like I'm.
Explain it.
Right.
But like, you gotta, you gotta like, like you, so just like the CAC, or, you know, we don't go write their request or, you know, like, and say, hey, you know, we, we don't, we can't speak for them.
Right.
We've gotta work with them and share what our community's needs are. And they say, well, we've got the organizational capacity to help facilitate this and we'd love your support. And then we're their cheerleader or their supporter to help get them and their needs met. And they're responding to us as community experts who understand what the community needs. So it's not, it's not us going, we, we can't go to Senator Murray's office and say, hey, I'm here on behalf of BHASO.
Okay, got it.
I mean, if you're on their board and you have their permission, but you can go in tandem with them and with board support and say, hey, you know, this community, Mason County and Thurston County, we really need these things. BHASO is ready to take this on. Here's this letter of full support from the county commissioners, support the request, and I'm here to, I'm here to help. That's, that's the way, I understand it would work.
So I'll give the example for the meat processing plant, for example. That's like a priority for us, like, it is a priority, but we did not submit the application.
Right.
The EDC did. We fully supported it. We had our lobbyists. Anytime we talked, we were like, this is a priority for us, like, right? Like, we did not submit the application, right, but we're fully supportive of, of that request. And so I think we can do the same thing with Connections, have them submit it.
Yeah.
You can write a letter of support, and then whenever we're talking with our congressional delegates, be like, this is a priority for the county. We fully support that application.
Perfect.
Um, and so that way, it's.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I was, I was just gonna say, like, um, the reason there's not this whole full process set up for federal earmarks is because we are new to it. Like, last year was the first time we've submitted for federal earmarks. And um, it was, it was a whole learning curve for us. I think we're still in that learning curve stage. We're learning year by year, so.
And they change it from year to year.
And they do.
They, they do.
Uh, and so that, I feel like, you know, the reason why it's kind of, it seems a little clunky right now, it's because we are still on our training wheels, basically. We are learning how this works, we're, um, and, you know, for us last year to just even be involved in the federal earmarks process was a huge lift and it was something that, um, you know, we were very happy that we even got funding on our first year ever doing it. It's unfortunate that, you know, we got.
Got it, and then they could get.
It's like they give, they gave you candy and then they're like, take it away, like.
You never know, it might come back.
But, so like using the EDC one as an example, I think that's a great one. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, an associated agency that has their, you know, they've got their mission and we're in support of it. We work with them to tie our goals into their work plan.
Okay.
And, you know, we communicate what the community's needs are and what the county supports and what we see as a, as a good idea. But we can't uh speak on their behalf and we can't go to the Congress and say, hey, the EDC wants money for this. And like, we, as a board, really can't even talk about that. Like, I, if I was to come in here and say, well, you know, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the EDC and I think we should do this, we should do that, that doesn't like guarantee for the rest of you that, like, that is the full picture for the EDC. So we have to have them come in and they provide, you know, uh, some type of update on what they're doing and how their, you know, vision is such and such and how it aligns with us. And they ask us for their support. Then it's not just Commissioner Grant speaking on their behalf. We, you know, it's important that the full board hears it from their mouth. And then you advocate on their behalf for such and such an idea, and that's how you develop, you know, the, the alignment amongst the board and the different organizations. Josh probably has good things to say now.
So I just wanna back up just a little bit, thirty thousand foot. So the, for, so we have a shared language. It is community project funding. So that's what we're talking about through Congress, is community project funding.
It used to be called earmarks.
Right.
They don't like that word.
It's important that we have that shared language, so that we're saying the same thing that our congressional delegates are asking us to say.
One more time for me.
Community project funding.
CPF's.
So, um, Commissioner Grant, maybe just a recommendation for Connections to be able to access, maybe having a meeting between uh yourself, uh, Congresswoman Murray's staff, or, I'm not sure if it was Cantwell's or, or Murray's who told you there was, okay.
Yeah.
Congresswoman Murray's staff and Connections and like, trying to just, you know.
Hey, yeah, got, yeah, that's a great idea.
And then that way, um, you know, I think, uh, Congress, or Senator Murray's per- portal is open, so they can go ahead and apply and.
Yeah, it's probably too late this year.
So I'll give you the.
I think it's, it's still open, yeah.
The deadline is April eighteenth.
Okay.
And what we, with the. And what we, what the, uh, different delegations have shared is they're opening the port holes. But they're not sure if there's even going to be a process.
Right.
So to Commissioner Mejia's point, yes, A, we're learning, B, it changes every year. And C, it's unclear if the current Congress is gonna allow for community project funding.
It's worth a shot.
It's not atypical in our experience, it's been like that every single time.
Well, right, and that's very typical of a budget process and I, that I don't, that part I get.
Way easier.
Yeah, and so, so let me just make sure, so to wrap that into like what I heard, which would be that. We're still kind of fumbling through how we're doing this kind of pri, I mean, there's no real priority, like, that, that's one of the things I thought. It was like, okay, well, are we gonna have to come up with a, a priority list of what we think that, so. And, um, and, uh, and then, you know, and then I, what I just also heard though was that. So if I was to meet with Connections, then Connections needs to come before us, present what they wanna do and then we sign off on it.
That would be my, like.
So Wolf Haven already came before us.
We all went there, but.
I didn't go there.
Okay, well, the, the rest of us did, the Wolf Haven thing is.
Right, but what I'm saying, like, we need a process and I wanna make sure that my projects are following the same project, processes as ours, as other projects. And so, um, but I think that's what we should clarify, we don't necessarily need them to come here, uh, in order for us all to get behind it, right?
I mean, that, my recommend, that's, that's, that's how you get board involvement. And that's, you know, like, you, you get them on board, maybe they're working with staff, they come in, like, th- there's gotta be, you know. If, I'm trying to think of how to, from the way that I conceive things, to, to grab, you know, to make, you know, we. These, you know, these are priorities in order to make them.
What you need though, I'm just asking what the rest of us needs, you know?
Is part of, that is part of the, I'm, well, okay, I shouldn't say me, I'm saying this is how I think it works.
So let, I think what you're talking about is, if, if, if the board is going to sign a letter of support.
Right.
For a project, ideally, the whole board is made aware of what the project is. That can happen a couple of different ways, um, whether commissioners go out to engage, uh, to tour.
Which we did.
Or, or, or we have them come here, that has happened also. Then you inform, hey, county manager, this group wants a letter of support. Ideally, we're sending that out to commissioners with a week's notice.
Okay.
So then, then we can come, put that on the agenda and then you can talk about the project and giving that letter of support.
Right.
Right now in this environment, things are moving very quick.
Right.
Because of the uncertainty at the federal level, um, folks are needing to round up those letter of supports quickly.
Yes.
Um, and I think to what Commissioner Mejia said, that us submitting our, our first round of, um, community. Project funding.
C P F.
Community project funding, last year, we learned some valuable lessons about things that resonate with individual offices. With the administration.
Right, absolutely.
Um, and, and like you said, those that are reviewing it, right, yeah, you have to have strategy. That's why I think bringing on a lobbyist is gonna be helpful to us, so that we can create, like we do at the state level. What is our priority list, what is our platform that we want?
And work on it all year.
Work on it all year and develop those partnerships so that we're bringing people together.
Yes, that I fully get.
And I, I would say it wasn't just luck that our applications was picked up last year, so.
Right.
We're learning, we're learning fast and we were successful.
Right.
But Congress changed.
In its years of work, so I think, I think my, my thought, like, the, the letter coming from Wolf Haven, that's not a letter from us.
Right.
That's a letter from an outside organization telling us that they're doing this, that they want this and they're asking us to support it.
Yes.
The, there's, if there was a letter from Connections or B H A S O and them saying. This is our priority, this is what we wanna do, this is, you know, would you support us? That's, that looks different than us as a board initiating a C P F on somebody else's behalf. Is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So.
Got it.
You know, so if, if it's coming from them and they're saying this is their priority, that's different. Than if it's coming from a single commissioner that is saying, well, this is their priority. Then we have to say, well, we need to know from them for sure, cause we can't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
This has been a useful dialogue for staff, it's appreciated.
Yep, okay, so, got it, I mean.
And I think formalizing the process for next year.
That was a good idea.
We will definitely do that if we bring the federal lobbyists on.
So I will be reaching out to Connections and, um, you know, and then we'll figure out what those next steps would be for us. I don't even know if they're interested, so we'll see. Yeah, you don't know.
Can I, um, just, I guess, uh, going back to kind of, um. Just so at least staff can start working on some of these requests, I'm wondering, um. So I, I really based on, one of my questions when I met with the congressional delegates was like, what is your priority, right? Um, like, what is more likely to get us through that finish line?
It's our strategy.
Yeah, and so, um, and then, so county manager, do you mind sharing the, the email? Um, that Taylor sent over?
Yes, absolutely.
Um. I'm wondering, how does, how would the board like to proceed? Do we want to have staff go down some of these avenues or, or not? Or, um, I guess I'm just asking for, for direction on, on where, where we wanna go from here.
Yeah, because these, as you mentioned, Commissioner Mejia, these submissions, to Josh's point, we, it took a lot of work. And there's a lot of groundwork that takes place, um, we always wanna put the best submission forward. Uh, and we get a lot of feedback from our delegation when things are on track and they help us, like, hey, that's not. Developed enough and so.
I, I'd like to see us resubmit what we, what we did, the work's been done, the, the skids are greased. And our delegates under, they know the projects, they were interested in them last time, so they would be interested in them this time.
And the, the project from last year is the Fairgrounds request. Um, and I, I'm in agreement, I, I believe that we should resubmit it. I would wanna ask for more because we found out a million dollars wasn't really gonna do much. Um, and so I would, I would like us to, to go for more and I think we just really have to change the language though because. Um, how it was framed last year, it was COVID, but, okay.
And, uh, can I ask real quick, um, so, and they said, they said that's a, one of their stra, strategies for us. And your conversations were, were that we just resubmit?
Resubmit.
Because these ones got canceled?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, and then, um. Um.
One more, can I just ask one more question? So, and this, this is just clarification, so these are the projects, the ones that you're kind of looking at that really are, the money is gonna come straight to Thurston County. And we're gonna use it, okay, yeah, just needed to clarify, okay.
That's a good point, cause there are.
There are two separate things we're talking about.
Yes, yes.
What is a, as a jurisdiction, do we wanna go forward?
Right.
Projects that we're working.
We want, what do we need money for and what do we wanna support?
Yes.
And what do we have the capacity to bring on, is it gonna be more operational costs or is it?
Sorry for interrupting.
No, no, that's, that's a good clarification.
The support conversation, there's, there's an opportunity for us to build stakeholder engagement, for us to build strategy in that. And community dialogue around which projects are gonna have the most meaningful impact that we'd look to have as well.
And so, just so you have, the board has full awareness, the project we submitted last year was for an emergency site building at the Fairgrounds. It is designated as a place of last resort for animals and the population in that area for Thurston County. And so it's to have a building that can house those places that, for that emergency shelter. Um, it is shovel ready, so that's, I think, what was attractive to it, about it from the delegation. So that's ready to go, all the work has been vetted, but I do think that increasing that amount is a good idea, so we can get to work on that really quick.
And it's an emergency site for animals?
Animals and people.
And then.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
It looks very cool, the, um, and then I guess the, uh, another one, uh, with Representative Glusnik Camp Perez. Just since she's sitting on appropriations, um, and the Fairgrounds is not in her district. I'm wondering if the water rights purchase is of interest to the board and Commissioner Grant, I, I don't think.
No idea.
You have, yeah, so I was like, there hasn't been.
Yeah.
Uh, this was, uh, I don't know when we got this briefing, um.
A year ago.
It was.
Let us, maybe on that one, let us go back and find some of the information that we provided previously and put together.
And, yeah, and I, we've been looking for, for funding, there was.
And it's still not entirely clear. Like the availabil, like, there was still some, but.
This is down the south, those, like, south.
The Chehalis Basin watershed.
Yeah, I mean, if it's some.
Let us circle back with Public Works and CPAD to get an update.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
Ideally, we're gonna walk away from this meeting with a, here's our list.
That's fine with me.
To move forward with, and then staff can focus their attention on, uh, retooling where we need to, the submissions. Sending you any information as a commission that you need, background. And then also having the, uh, purp, uh, the, the prep conversations we need to have on, with our delegation on what's gonna be submitted. And making sure that we're taking into consideration all the sensitivities that they're aware of that are happening right now.
Okay, is there more, Commissioner Mejia?
Um, well, I don't think the Martinway Corridor will be ready on time.
You know, our goal is to prep that for next year, to have a strong collaborative approach with the stakeholders to put something forward.
And I guess I'll just add this on to next year's list as well. Um, so I, I did learn from Stevens County that they got four million dollars for their. Courthouse, they said they named it something different. And I asked that to Congresswoman Strickland, when I was meeting with her, I was like, you can get money for that from like a direct appropriations?
A family justice center?
And so she was just like, you do not name it a courthouse, you do not use any, she's like, name it something else. And I was like, I'll name it whatever you want, like, just.
Regional center.
Yeah.
That is, like, you know what I mean, it's.
Regional governmental, yeah, something, um, and so I, for next year, I don't know if it would be. I guess I'm just putting this on, on the boards, kind of my wishlist or my, is that we submit a request next year. Um, for our.
Government administrative center?
Yeah.
Something like that, I mean, there's, we've got lots of discussion around that.
Um.
Yeah.
It could be a centralized place for all people, like, you know, that I think of, like, that's where people can get the hub. You know, you think about all the services that could be, instead of it being a courthouse, it's a service center of some sort.
I think that's good and I think, you know, aligning our goals and requests with our, you know, stated retreat goals.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that, that'll be the same thing that I mentioned when we have our, uh, our revenue discussions upcoming is. Just aligning those with our goals, getting everything on the same page.
Yeah, when are we getting those? This week?
Sometime.
Hopefully this week, uh, I'll follow up with.
Anything else, Commissioner Mejia?
Do, just stop, how?
We just, we need to get.
So those two, for sure, um, well, and there's three, or the ORV probably?
I heard we submit fair and research water rights.
What about ORV?
We'd be supporting that, that would be a Grace Harbor request, that we would be in support of.
I don't think Grace Harbor is probably ready to submit something yet.
Right.
Um, our, our joint meeting with Grace Harbor, that's when we can form that plan.
Okay.
Support it, also wanted to, uh, make the commissioners know that after spring break, that week, we'll be able to, um, have a discussion. Next steps for the courthouse projects and where we're at with the solicitation that was put out. So we're looking forward to have that conversation, as it feeds into this bigger conversation about going after additional funding, I think it'll be.
We have, uh, in, in addition to those, we have two letters of support, uh, requested.
Light reading for spring break vacation.
Four.
I read them.
C P Fs from, uh, one from Wolf Haven, one from the E D C, the E D C one. The E D C one, uh, it should be for two point two five million, not one point five million. Um, so I, if, if it's, uh, if there's concurrence, I'd like those lumped in with the, this, uh, thumbs up consent.
So, um, this is a resumettle, the, uh, for the regional meat processing.
Yep.
Infrastructure?
This was one that was, that was funded, it was going all the way through and then it was cut, just like ours.
Okay, um. Thumbs up.
And then the Wolf Haven one is based on the tours that we all had about a week ago. And they're, uh, looking for funds to build that, their, uh, their treehouse.
That's fine.
We have thumbs up.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, next item on the agenda, flag for transgender day of visibility.
Commissioner Claus, would you believe this conversation?
Yeah, sure, thank you, um, so I hope everyone had an opportunity to, uh, review the county manager's email from last Friday. Um, I was just hoping to have the county fly the transgender flag on, um, transgender day of visibilities. Which is next Monday, thirty first, um, so I think, uh, the email is pretty. It kind of, uh, lays out everything that I was thinking, so I don't have anything additional to add aside from. Um, you know, just pointing out, highlighting that this aligns with the Board of Health's formal proclamation, um, acknowledging the day. And I think that this is one step of hopefully many that shows the county taking tangible actions. That align with our proclamations, which is something that we've talked about many times, so.
All right, is there any discussion? Yeah, no, I just, I think it's a great idea and I think, um, you know, I'm glad that you brought it up and, sure, let's do it.
So you're just looking for staff direction to take that step?
Um, I just, I, I don't know the rules for flags, so I would say as long, you know, I hope we would follow the, the flag code. And I know that there's things about, you know, how high the American flag is supposed to be in relation to other flags and just avoid those. Avoid those things.
And that was, uh, pointed out in the email as well, that the auxiliary flag will be displayed in accordance with government standards for size and placement. Um, and big thank you to Ashley for helping me kind of research what those requirements were so that we could make sure it's all squared away and there's no logistical issues.
Good job, Ashley.
We'll work that through our facilities team, um, who does the, the raising of the flags and the putting down. The county has, um, this is not, uh, uh, out of the realm of what we've done. We, we fly other flags and so we can make sure that it falls within the process.
I'll finish with my, what I was saying, um, so I, that was my request, just as long as we, uh, follow the, the, the flag code. And then, uh, maybe at a future dis, future meeting, we could just talk about, like, setting a policy for this kind of thing. So that, you know, there, there's, I don't know, if, if we want these attached to only, um. Our proclamations or if this is something that any community group can come in and request. Or if there's, you know, any guidelines around when or what's appropriate, so I'm sure there's some kind of model code out there. But that was my only request, is there any further discussion? All right, that brings us to closed session, R C W four two dot three zero dot one four zero two. A portion of a meeting of a quasi judicial body which relates to a quasi judicial, quasi judicial matter. Between named parties appealing a rehearing examining decision, Paul Windler, approximately thirty minutes, board action may follow. We will be returning at eleven oh five. We will be returning at eleven oh five.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for March 26, 2025. We're just returning from a closed session under RCW 42 dot three zero one four zero subsection two. The meeting is now back in session. All right, we have in the boardroom Commissioners Grant, Klaus, and Commissioner Mensah on Zoom. We've concluded our closed session. Does the board have any action to take?
There was no action.
All right. That concludes our agenda for the day. Meeting adjourned. Commissioner Mensah, enjoy your flight.